See that okay, David?
Yep, looks good, Aaron. Good evening and welcome to the Allegheny Clarion Valley School District, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two virtual workshop. This evening I will be hosting this meeting from my home. Last week I tested positive for COVID and have been quarantined due to ongoing symptoms. The symptoms seem to be changing, but for the most part I've had body aches and brain fog. So if I struggle tonight, I'm going to blame COVID. Since I've not missed a meeting in over sixteen years, I'm not going to let COVID interrupt that streak that I have going on. So without further ado, we'll move directly into the workshop. As a friendly reminder, please keep the mics muted until you're ready to speak. And I also remind the school board members to jump in anytime with questions or comments. I'll pause briefly after each motion and section, and if I don't hear anything, I'll continue to move on. Madam Secretary, can you please do the roll call at this time?
Carrie Armagast. Megan Dreer.
Here.
Brady Fight.
Here.
Diane Page.
Here.
Jeff Powell. Jeff's connecting. Corey Sherman.
Here.
Jameen Stumpf.
Here.
Eric Sunderland.
Here.
Kelly Chuboliger.
Here.
We don't have anybody under public participation, but we do have a presentation this evening from Heather Scott. Heather is a PSBA advocacy ambassador and is going to explain the role and then also encourage school board members from AC Valley to get involved with the local legislators. Jen Fied and I have worked with Heather in the past and we're happy to have her with us tonight. Heather?
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Yes, we've interacted a few times before, but I haven't had the chance to speak with any of the board members. So this is a little different tonight. As David said, I am the PSBA advocacy ambassador. This is my second year in that position. Last year, everything was virtual, my first year, so it was kind of an interesting, interesting way to start. So I'm trying to get a few more things done this year than we were able to last year. Not going to take very long. There will be some materials that David will email to all of the board members afterwards that will give you some more information on what I'm talking about, but I'm just going to hit some highlights tonight. Just a little bit more about me, teeny bit. This is my, I am also on the Slippery Rock School Board. That is separate from the PSBA ambassador position completely. But this is my, I'm starting my third term with Slippery Rock, so I know exactly what meetings are like for you guys and how they go, which is why I'm going to try and stay pretty quick. I had two students in the district, one is a freshman at Pitt this year, and I still have one who's a junior, so I've got the parent side down also. And just understanding a lot of the issues that come up for school board members, for parents, things that come to the board. Different things that concern you and that you wish legislators knew sometimes. Because I know sometimes you see their decisions and you're like, that makes no sense. If they only knew what goes on at the schools, then they would make better decisions or different decisions. And that's kind of where we come in, where PSBA comes in, where I come in as an ambassador, and also where you can come in and can help as individuals and also as a board. So I am going to try and share my screen here quickly. If you'll give me one minute, I've been having some glitches with this. Let me see if I can bring that up here. One sec. No, share screen. Here we go. Okay. Okay, I'm just going to share this. It's legislative advocacy. This is just kind of a quick one-page flyer. This is one of the pieces of information you'll get. And I'm actually going to start on the far right with the advocacy ambassador's role. My role is to work with the schools and the legislators and kind of connect those that maybe haven't had a connection before, haven't had a chance to meet, get together, talk, express their views or opinions. Just facilitate communication between the two sides. And then encourage you, as the bottom note there says, to promote your achievements in the schools and your successes that you're proud of. There are lots of different ways to do that, and I'll get into that a little bit more. PSBA's role, you can read that for yourself. I know a lot of times you hear PSBA and you just think, well, they charge us a lot and maybe they help us with a few different, you know, redoing policy, things like that. But we do have the advocacy side, which is something I know I wasn't even aware of as a board member until last year. So this is something I wanted to share with everyone. The biggest reason advocacy is important is because in addition to the notes here, preparing children to be contributing members of society and a way to get your name out there when there are limited resources and you want to make sure you can get as much as you can from them. It also gives you control over a group of people or some control over what a particular group of people uses as part of their decision-making. You're not always in Harrisburg every day. Most of you aren't there at all. You're not, you're not in Harrisburg. You're not on the phone with them every day, but there are ways to, to influence them and to show them the concerns that really affect schools. And so that's kind of the overarching look at it. You can see school board and superintendent's role. You want to be in touch with the legislators and their staff and just let them know what's going on in your districts, your successes, what you need to make your schools more successful in certain areas, the issues that you're facing, the budget constraints, just the different things that you want them to know about your district so that they can take that into consideration when they're making their decisions. Because keep in mind, not every legislator has come from an education background or is very well-versed in that. So they might not understand all of the issues that are going on in your district or even in school districts in general. Maybe they're very well-versed in another area, just not education. So we need to give them as much information as possible. That also gives you a chance to show that you're the expert on that, that you have good information, that if they have a question, maybe you're the district they want to come to and ask, well, if I vote this way on this, how does that affect the schools in my district? So these are also important things. We want to make sure you're sharing with them. And that, you know, that shows you, you want to identify the priorities for your district, the challenges. Promote yourself as well as you can, and that's through all of you as individual board members and also as a board together. And then the superintendent can do that as well. I'm going to turn this off now because that was all I wanted to share there. Like I said, you will get this later on as in your email. So a few more things I wanted to touch base on very quickly. I talked a little bit about why advocacy matters. There have been some studies, one of them done in two thousand and seventeen that actually said some of the things that most affect legislators are the, are the different modes of input from their constituents and whether that's school boards or individuals, everyone across the board. They want that input. Face-to-face is the best way to do it. Phone calls are good, and then it just kind of goes down for, you know, phone calls, emails, written mail. All of them are good. You want to have a mix of all of these. That's reaching out to them. We also want to bring them into the schools. And that is the show them what it takes program. And hopefully we can get one of those organized for you guys this year, which brings the legislators into the schools. Board members can be there. They tour the school. You show them the good things going on. You show them some of the areas that maybe you're working on. But it's another great way to have some face time with the legislators and share, share everything positive and concerns, kind of both, in both directions. So there'll be different ways that the PSBA will actually reach out to you to ask how you, you know, for you, for your help. The biggest one, and I think we had four last year that I can remember, all kind of in a row, are legislative alerts or calls to action. These come through an email, and what this is, is if votes are being taken, that we need to impress upon the legislators. Really, you need to vote a certain way because it will affect districts negatively. We'll put a call out and perhaps ask you to call, or if you're nearby, stop in, but to make contact with your legislator and tell them, this is a concern, please vote yes or please vote no because this affects the school negatively, or this is a great step and we definitely want you to vote this way. So you will get emails here and there, just being asked to do that. Sometimes it's sign the email on the PSBA site. Sometimes it's make that phone call. Anytime in person is always great. So something to keep in mind there if you're nearby in office. I know for me, that doesn't happen very often, but working on that. Know your legislators. If you know them, you can send them emails at any point or call them if there are other concerns. As board members, though, when you do make calls, you want to be clear if you're calling as an individual or if you're calling as a board member, because you are representative of your board. On most things, you want to make sure you are in a, you know, you have, you have a unified voice on a topic. So if you're calling as a board member representing the district, just make sure that that is how the entire board feels. If you are calling as an individual, you have something separate, just make sure your legislator is aware of that when you send that information or make that phone call, just to keep them separate so that they're not getting two different inputs from the same area and wondering what's going on. Getting to know your legislators is a good thing, too. I know some of the ones, if you know that they have kids in the same district or they played the same sports, just kind of anything to get a little in with them to first talk is always good. Some seem more than open to talking and others don't have as much time or just kind of want to get down to business. So if you can work in a little something that makes the calls a little more friendlier or, you know, open them up, that's always a good thing to do as well. Just a couple more points here, and I will let you go because I know there's a lot on your schedule. Tips for effective advocacy. When you do call or write, you want to keep it simple, get right to the point. I'm writing about this bill. I would like you to vote yes because, and then explain what in your district needs them to vote yes. If you vote no, this is what we get taken away, or if you vote yes, it's a good thing for our district because. So let them know why you're making the call or sending the email, but be very clear about it. Make sure you know the facts about your district and any data you send, so you don't want to send anything incorrect. You don't always have to send data, but it's a good thing to make sure that you have it right if you do. And stories. They always want to hear stories, personal things about how your district was affected. Not just, well, schools in Pennsylvania, but AC Valley did this. We have had this classroom added. We've had students do this. Share those stories, all of those successes and everything you've done that has helped your district, that you've turned around, where a vote that they made, you know, positively affected you, or maybe a vote that they made negatively impacted you. And this is what we would love to see you do going forward, just to give them some information. But share your stories, because the more personal it is, the more likely they are to remember that when it's time to vote. Just a side note on that dreaded thing that we all, all love as board members, social media. A lot of the representatives are using Twitter and Facebook, so you can get out there and you can, you know, tag them and things, share things on their pages. You can reach out to them that way as well. I did mention the show them what it takes. We would love to get into your school with the legislators, have you do a visit. I know David is definitely very involved. He speaks to the, he speaks to them all the time. So I know it's not, you're not one of the districts that's lacking in contact, but I think it's still always nice when they can come in for just a little visit and meet the students, see the buildings themselves. And then the last thing I want to talk about quickly here is Success Starts Here. It is a program that we have, pretty easy website, successstartshere.org. It's where schools can share those success stories, whether, you know, like I said, it could be, you've been able to add a STEAM classroom that you didn't have before, or your students have run a charity and raised a large amount of money. Whatever it might be, just any success stories in your school. It could be a teacher got a grant that hasn't been in your district before. Anything that advocates for positive motion, positive forward motion for your district is a great thing to share. And you can always tag your legislators as well, share those stories online. And we do, when those come through, we do try to tag the legislators ourselves also to make sure that they're out there. So that is it in a nutshell. Advocacy is you reaching out when you can to help promote your school, to help promote what your school needs. Like I said, it could be as simple as a phone call or an email. If you get a chance to visit, that's wonderful. I know it's something like I said, I didn't know anything about, and some people maybe don't want to go in person, which is great to have those other options. A quick phone call, most of the time you're going to reach a staff member and not the legislator themselves, but that's fine. You can leave messages. Sometimes they will get back to you. They want to follow up with some additional questions. So there's lots of information that you can share with them, and as you become more connected, they learn more about the knowledge that you have and what you can provide to them in return. And twice a year, this is something, one of the ways that you can directly help, it's a kind of a scheduled day. Twice a year, we do have what we call advocacy day. In the fall, it is virtual. We just spend our day on different Zoom calls with the legislators. They're usually about fifteen or twenty minutes, unless you have a particularly chatty legislator, and sometimes they go a little long. But we try and keep them pretty short, just a chance to share about your school. So come fall, if you see that on the PSBA site, or if David forwards anything to the board or mentions it, that's a great way to get in and just talk a little bit to, to your legislator. Or if you don't feel like talking, you can always just kind of listen and see how it goes. That's always a good thing. And in the spring, if you are available, we are hoping to have an in-person advocacy day this year. It is on March, or April twenty-fifth. I have not been to one yet because there wasn't anything last year in person. But that's something that if anyone wants to travel to Harrisburg for a day, we do that, and we speak with the legislators and we just spend our day there. So very quick, I tried to get as much in as I can. If there are any questions, I'm welcome, you know, welcome them, free to answer. I didn't time that, so I'm not sure how long I took. So David, I'll let you tell me if I have time for questions or if you want me to shut up and let you get on with your next thing.
Yeah, we can open it up. I'm not sure if there's any questions from the board members at this time. Thank you. Did a good job explaining the rule and the importance of advocacy, Heather. You know, I always look at it that I try to educate the legislators and influence their vote. And it doesn't always happen, and sometimes it's frustrating, but you just wait till the next topic and you continue to build the relationships and continue to, to fight for your school district. And a lot of times they forget about Northwestern, Pennsylvania.
Yeah, that is very true.
So thank you again. We appreciate your time tonight.
Great. Well, thank you. And after you get the handouts, if you ever have any questions, want to reach out to me, my email is at the bottom of the legislative advocacy, the one I put up on the screen. You'll get that. My email is in there. If anyone ever wants to reach out with questions, feel free, whether it's advocacy or anything else. So I appreciate the time and I'm going to depart from my own meeting now. So.
Thanks, Heather.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Okay, and as you can see, we do have Mark Turnley, our auditor. He will be here on the seventeenth, Monday, when we're meeting in person. He will present the audit for the last school year. Before we move into the consent agenda, are there any board concerns that we can discuss at this time? Hearing none, we'll move straight into letter A, which is part of the field trips and conferences, and that's on page five. Aaron, if you could just scroll forward a little bit. And I've just provided a brief overview of each one of the requests. We do have eleven in front of you tonight. We do have the National Honor Society and Student Council members, along with their advisors, going to Perry Township to take the wreaths from the veterans' graves, which is a fantastic community event. We have a request from Peggy Plamen and Jen Stover to use part of the TANF grant to take a number of students out into the community, purchase some items, and then drop them off at the Veterans Hospital in Butler. In addition to that, we have a PBIS team up at the high school. It's a PBIS whole school reward that they put into, take the kids up to the Meadville Express. And this is for any student that did not receive an infraction for the first semester. We also have on page six, we have Courtney Rice. She's our new school counselor through the grant. And she put in for attendance to the Clarion County Councilor's meeting as well as SAP training. Just keep in mind that SAP training will support her and the rest of the students and staff and her colleagues up at high school as well as the elementary. And that program focuses in on some of our more needy students that need additional resources and supports. And I've attended that training and it's absolutely fantastic, and that will be paid for by the ARPAS or three money. In addition to that, Jen Stover, Peggy Plamen, and Tracy Hardle put into attending PDE Bureau of Special Education Annual Conference. I'm very excited that they put in for this. They did budget for it last year. I remember it coming through. And it's in Hershey on March second, third, and fourth. And all the workshops are within your packets, and there's over a hundred workshops and a lot of very relevant, meaningful workshops that they'll probably spread out and attend as many as they can. Andrea Stewart, she put in for the past annual conference. She did get a scholarship that will pay for a portion of that. And I do have money in my travel and conference section that we can use the rest of that to pay for her attendance. And again, just like the special ed conference, there's over a hundred workshops for her to attend, and she'll be able to meet and interact with other business leaders, and they'll be talking about budgeting and finance and purchase and all that. Below that, we have Justin White in the Gift Club. This is the annual coffee delivery. They did a great job by raising or collecting coffee for the veterans, and they go over and drop it off at the Mechlin Shailey Veteran Center and spend some time with the veterans, and it's enjoyed by all. On the bottom of page six, Jenny Lowry put in to take four students to Punchs Atonies for the district choir, which is always exciting. And then on page seven, there's two more requests. Myself, I put in for the PARS conference two years ago. It got canceled and did not get rescheduled last year, and they're going to hold it this year. So I'm putting into, we've already paid registration, so it'll just be for mileage and lodging. We could use Title II aid to cover the cost, and it's in that state college. And then Dr. DiTulio, he was able to find a PMEA professional development on Monday the seventeenth. That's the same day we have a Act eighty day. So Scott will be out there attending sessions, and then he's also presenting as well. And that concludes the conferences and field trips. Are there any questions or concerns about any of those items that are in front of you this evening? Moving down through the consent agenda, letter B, we have one teacher, Kylie Craig is our guest teacher to be on the substitute teacher roster. Letter C, that's the STEM team, that Sarah McCord, Sarah Black, and Stephanie Best. They're putting in to utilize the elementary art room after school, and the date's listed. And they're going to hold the gems. That's girls excelling in math and science. And I remember back when we interviewed Sarah Black, she had talked about a similar program, so really excited to see this program up and running. And I, I'm real happy with the ladies out there willing to spend some extra time after school with the kids. And then letter D, Fay Gibson is our elementary girls' basketball coach, and she, he's been working with Mrs. Sherman and Mr. Sherman on holding a basketball practice for those kids, nine thirty to twelve thirty. They're going to go up to the high school and observe some of varsity kids practicing as well. So that's going to be a fantastic activity for elementary students. Moving into finance and purchase, letter A through I will be paying the bills during the voting meeting, and that information will be presented at that time. Now, very important, letter J, Act One is Pennsylvania Tax Relief Act. It's passed in two thousand and six. This index is calculated by averaging the percent increase in the statewide average weekly wage and the federal employment cost index. So basically, there's a cap on how much we can raise our taxes each year, and this year our cap is at four point six percent. And what this motion or resolution does, it does not indicate that we will raise to the index or even that we will raise taxes at all. But what it does show is that we're not giving out for a referendum that we want to raise above the four point six percent. So I just want to be real clear with this motion. Once we get into the budget season a little bit more, and I'm going to talk about the budget timeline here shortly, we can discuss, you know, taxation and if or what we want to raise it to. So I just wanted to be clear about letter J as we work down through finance and purchase. And then letter K, that's our annual budget timeline. Just keep in mind that the budget is year-round, and this is for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. In December, we're working really closely with the auditor. That report will be presented on January seventeenth, and we're also voting on the Act One index. We will be listening to and waiting, anticipating for the governor's address here sometime in January or even February. Once we have an idea of as far as our revenues coming in, we'll continue to meet with the department heads, and that'll happen at the beginning of March, and we'll start to pull together the site-based budget and supply categories throughout March and into April, calculating those numbers. Once Andrea and I get the supplies put together, we run the new salary and benefits, and we will be presenting a preliminary budget to the school board on April eleventh, and we'll vote on April eighteenth. That budget will again be modified depending on the revenues and expenditures, and then May sixteenth, we will vote, and then on May seventeenth, the actual budget will go on display for thirty days. And then the adoption of that budget will be on June sixteenth. Just keep in mind, the end of our fiscal year is June thirtieth, and it is school law that we have a budget submitted to the state by June thirtieth. So that's just a timeline and process that we're following. Moving down through letter L, we have three state contracts in front of you for your approval. The PA State Pepham, the Co-Stars, and the US Commodities, and these are contracts that we use. Infrequently, I would have to say, we bought our school van from one of these years ago, and we'll probably buy the new van from one of these here in the future. Theoretically, each one of these contracts go out, and they've already done the bidding. So the prices that are on these state contracts are as cheap as we can get, and it will eliminate us from having to go out to get three bids and, you know, negotiate the cost associated with that purchase. Moving on down to letter M and N, those are two donations from local businesses, Mandarin CPA LLC and Edmonton Ruhas are donating a hundred dollars each to the high school art program. Mrs. Forsythe and her students went out and decorated windows over the holidays, so the businesses want to give back, and we thank them greatly for their donations. Letter O, there's a list of over four hundred pieces of equipment in front of you this evening to be voted on. According to policy seven oh six point one, this property is considered unusable, and Andrea is going to remove these items from our list. And Aaron and Jeff and RJ have been working diligently to get a list of old technology put together, and we'll be able to get rid of it. Just keep in mind that a lot of this technology is anywhere from eight to twelve years old. So kudos to the student staff and the technology department for being able to maintain the equipment over that period of time. And then under letter P is the last item for finance and purchase. This is a data warehouse, and it used to be the old on-hand school program, which we had years ago through the Keystone to Opportunity Grant. And what this does is it provides a one-stop shop for our administrators and teachers to be able to access student data and make decisions, curriculum decisions and training decisions based off of successes and areas of improvement. And this is called the Ed Insight, and Justin Karim has been really working hard and spearheading this because this program is able to tap into our student information system as well as the IEP writer, and it helps to. And it helps to expedite their work and then provide data for I E Ps and. And you know, various other activities. As you can see, there are. Cost associated with it over three years. So it's ten thousand two hundred dollars first year and that includes training. Coaching and setup and then year two is five thousand eight hundred and seventy-one and then year three would be six thousand forty-seven. There's over a hundred and sixty school districts in the state using it. And I did have Zach look over not only the agreement, but the security policy as well. And it's very important. That we have a policy in place that would keep them from selling our data or using it inappropriately. And you know, Zach is in full agreement that everything's safe and secure at this time. So that was used with a fairly good success years ago with the Keystone to Opportunity Grant. We just couldn't keep it because it was so expensive. But this will be paid through the RPSR set aside money. So it's Carrie and Andrea and I was working through that. We had an additional, I believe it was eighty-seven thousand dollars come our way. As the federal programs was being explored. So this is just one area that we can really focus in on. Students and be able to make database decisions. Moving down to personnel. We do have a couple volunteers, letter A, we have Austin Craddy, Austin's an AC Valley graduate and he did play basketball for many years. He put in to be a volunteer with the boys basketball program. Letter B, we're happy to have Misty Heater as a nurse volunteer for the cheer squad. She's going to help out with the girls and I'm sure Dr. Jordan will have a report next week for you about the girls, but they're doing quite well with the cheerleading competition. And just keep in mind, if anybody needs medication, Misty can help transfer and administer that medication if the parents aren't going along with them. Letter C is our vacated assistant junior high basketball coaching position and Caleb Penny, again, another AC Valley graduate and. Sports fanatic, he put in to be the assistant junior high basketball coach at a salary of one thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars. And then below that is letter D, this is the part time temporary three hour cafeteria position and Amber Sanders is a. Current substitute who's filling that role right now. Stacy Reading was able to interview her this past week and make a recommendation. To hire at the motion below. And then the next three items, E, F and G, we have. Some clarification on our student aides. So we were able to. Through the grant move to part time aides in a full time position, but since then, we moved. Courtney Rice, who was a student one to one aide into the grant funded school council position. So what we failed to do last week or last month and it was my error, I didn't have a motion on there to fill her vacancy. So. Shonda Ritchie will be moving into the full time aid position. Crystal Wong will remain as the. Full time employee who got bumped up because of the S R grant. And then Michelle Adler will go from a part time aide and she's the next in the seniority line. Into a full time aid position. So we're just moving employees up. So she'll start and be. A full time employee. And then we have Beth Pence, who is a substitute aide. She'll be filling Michelle's part time aid position. And if there's any questions or comments or need for clarification, I, I welcome that at this time because. It took me a little bit of time to get through that as well. Moving on to letter. H. As we brought the grant and Andrea, Carrie and I had worked the budget items into it. We had a moving target. So by the time we finally got Courtney into the position and in front of the board for approval, we, we made a few errors. There was a error on the start date. We got her started at the beginning of the payroll, which. We had down in the motion December sixteenth. It was actually December thirteenth. And we had a error on that pro rated salary. So the salary will actually be twenty-eight thousand six seventy-nine twenty cents. For the remaining portion of the year. And keep in mind that is part of the RPSR grant money that is within the grant. We just made an error on the motion last month. And letter I, we will need to advertise for a substitute school nurse. We have one nurse right now and she's done a. Absolutely wonderful job, but she's moving into Pittsburgh to be closer to her family. So. We want to make a motion to advertise to get somebody in here and just keep in mind that that could be an LPN, RN. Or certified school nurse and our big need is in the middle of the day. So I encourage any. Even full time nurses out there who have some free time in the middle of the day, if they, if they want to work a few hours even. You know, we'd welcome that discussion. So we will be advertising to find a substitute nurse. Letter J, that's self explanatory, will be removing Emmy Faust from the Clearing Tax Collection Committee and adding Andrea Stewart into that position. And then a very exciting news, we do have an early bird contract in front of the school board for this month to be voted on as for the professional staff ACBA. And myself along with the negotiation committee has been working with Julie Smith and ACBA reps. And we have a contract in front of this evening and there's just some slight changes to it. Most of the language remains the same. They're proposing a two point eight percent raise. Changing the deductible from three hundred, six hundred to four hundred, eight hundred, increasing prescription costs from twenty-five. Dollars to thirty dollars. We will be eliminating the additional six hours of. Professional development or meetings, whatever that's been in that contract for quite some time now and then. We're, we'll be keeping the language in there about the health coverage post retirement for up to twelve years.
Can I clarify that David? It's twelve years single and it's six years if it's a partner, husband.
Husband and wife. Kelly cut out just a little bit there, but yeah, thank you Kelly for that.
So I do have a question about the, the contract there. What is everybody's thoughts instead of doing a three year, a five year? I know as a union member myself, I would be much more willing to sign a contract. That's five years versus three years.
Brady, we discussed both the three year and five year contract and we did have a salary proposal for both of them and the negotiation committee. Thought that it was in our best interest at this time to do a three year contract. Anybody wants to fill, jump in there? Okay, hearing no other comment.
I got kicked off. I was just trying to explain, did, did Brady get clarification on why we went with three years?
Not necessarily Kelly, if you want to go ahead into more detail.
Sorry, my, you cut me off right in the middle. I dropped. We talked about that Brady, but we as a board would like to have some time to evaluate. The insurance options that we're providing. And we want to take a close look at that in order to see if there could be any ways that we could maintain what we have with the staff, but also. Save some money because that's our biggest expenditure. So in three years, we're hoping that we will be able to come up with some better ideas for health coverage. And if we stick with five years, that's going to be way too long. We need to try and get this focused on and we didn't feel we had enough time to do it in this current year. And but three years will give us enough time to maybe come up with some better options for the district and the staff.
Okay, thank you Kelly for that.
Yeah, thank you Kelly. Any other questions about any of those items under personnel? Okay, moving down into instructional services, we did have a little bit of clarification. Dr. Jordan had brought in and three students this past. Month as student reps and Grace Barlet and Drew Whitcomb will be the representatives and then the alternate will be Kayden McAnney. And then the other item underneath instructional services is just an update for the health and safety plan. And according to the RPSR grant, this has to be reviewed and discussed at the board level every six months. So. We had it approved back in the summertime and it's time to get it back in front of the school board. There's no real changes to it. The only thing that I clarified is when we. Created this health and safety plan, we were focused in on a PA Department of Health and their guidelines. Well, since then, the PA Department of Health has pulled back and everything is coming from the CDC. So I just clarified that and I put down a section where it said. Contact tracing, isolation and quarantine. Will be focused in on the CD, CDC recommendations and will do any kind of mandates and recommendations that. That they have and they've recently, as everybody's aware, had made some changes to the number of days quarantined and. And getting students and staff back into school. So we're, I'm working closely with the school nurses and we've already made those adjustments. Under policy, we have policy six ten, purchase subject to bidding quotes, policy six eleven, purchase budgeted. And then policy six twenty-six, attachment procurement in front of you this evening and. All three policies have very slight changes to them. The wording has not changed, but periodically the bidding threshold limits change. So the board shall after due public notice advertise for competitive bids. Purchase furniture, equipment, school supplies and appliances costing twenty-one thousand nine hundred or more. So the old number was nineteen thousand four hundred. So after twenty-one thousand nine hundred, we have to advertise in a local newspaper for three weeks and. It had, I mean, at least two newspapers for three weeks. And then it goes on that furniture, equipment, school supplies and appliances that is purchased by the district costing more than eleven thousand eight hundred. And the old number was ten thousand five hundred, but less than the new number twenty-one thousand nine hundred, which the old number is nineteen thousand four hundred. May be obtained through three. Free quotes, so we don't necessarily have to go out the bin. And then furthermore, it goes down to anything up to the eleven thousand eight hundred. Which used to be the ten thousand five hundred, it could be taken care of in-house. So it just changes the threshold with the bidding limits. Within all three of those policies and that number is interconnected through all of them. So that policy six twenty-six, if you recall, I think that was back in. Two thousand eighteen, that was the new gun guidelines, the unified grant guidelines. And that was a recommendation through PSBA and that's kind of what Heather talked about earlier. Most of the time we use PSBA for. Policy updates and those are part of them right there. We don't have anything under facilities tonight. I will provide a brief report next week for Mr. Milford. And under transportation, we have a couple items. Letter A, we do have Brian Brewer putting in to be a substitute driver for Bailey Bussing and just like the school district, the contractors need substitutes as well. And then letter B, Pam Myers, Pam Myers, Inc. Put in to add a two thousand and fourteen CRV and to remove the. Two thousand twelve Chrysler van from her fleet. And then on page four, under miscellaneous and I'll ask Jemeen and Corey to jump in. When they feel appropriate, but we do have an article of an agreement in front of you and it's related to the Career Center reimbursement money. So the agreement had changed a couple of different times over the last. Two decades, I believe, and the language is a little bit unclear. So to clarify this and to target some of the needs that we have at. Career Center with the HVAC system, the roof, building structure itself and upgrade some shops. We were, we have a motion in front of you tonight and an agreement for the Career Center to keep some of the reimbursement that we get. For each of the seven schools. So it's not just AC Valley, it's all seven Clearing County schools. So to dive a little bit deeper into that, the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we're to get fifty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars back in reimbursement. The twenty-twenty-one school year, we got fifty thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The nineteen twenty school year, we got fifty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars back. So. There, year one, they're having a proposal to keep forty percent of it. So just quick calculations, that's just over twenty-two thousand. Seven hundred and forty-four dollars. And then year two and three, Career Center would be keeping thirty percent of it back. And I think I'd highly recommend that we approve this article agreement. In my mind, it's way better than taking out a bond and then paying interest on that to do some upgrades. This way, if the Career Center is able to maintain. A fund balance out there, then they can take care of various projects that we have done here at the district. Corey, Jemeen, is there anything that you two could add into that discussion?
Oh yeah, this is Corey. So one thing, how that money is calculated guys is based on our attendance. It's how all of that's figured out. So that number could fluctuate, but by keeping that, that forty percent back, it will save. From having to take bonds out to complete small projects. She'll be able to, like David said, update some shops. Do some minor things in the building, some preventative maintenance stuff and just kind of get the building up to date on some, some different areas. But it'll, it'll save from a bond and by having a little bit of money setback, it'll just benefit the, the kids in the school and. And try to keep everything on track. All schools, career centers do it differently. This way, from our discussions over the last few months, this way seemed like one of the best ways to try to, try to build those balances up because right now there's no. Money set aside in any funds to do anything. So by this way, it'll build it up the first few years and then it'll switch over to a lower percentage thereafter.
And two, just for clarification, Tracy Wildison is doing an excellent job over there. And how this was found was she was rereading the articles of agreement and the term, the terminology had changed, Corey, when was that? Two thousand nineteen ninety, something like that?
It was the late nineties or early two thousands.
I don't remember, don't have it right in front of me, but anyhow, it has been a number of years that actually the terminology was taken out of there. That the reimbursement was not to be going back to the home schools. So you know, and, and as she determined this. Wording error and even though it had been being done, you know. That's why whenever we talked about it, we decided to just do the forty percent instead of not sending back anything to the home schools and. And again, she doesn't want to do that forever, but just to build up a fund balance to do some of the repairs to this, to the building. The building was opened in nineteen seventy-six. And other than a few bonds, there haven't been an awful lot done to that building. So and but she's doing an excellent job. She has a great list of things. She has priced them out and she has a very clear idea of what could be done and what should be done. What absolutely needs to be done and, and a timeframe for doing it. So I really think that we need to, again. As, as David said, that needs to be looked at very closely and agreed upon.
Yeah, and we can provide, we'll get a copy from her. She does have a very good detailed plan for the next five to ten years. On what she'd like to do to the building and some different upgrades and, and stuff. So we'll get that printed and bring it to the meeting, the voting meeting next week.
Thank you both, Corey and Jemeen, and I do appreciate your willingness to serve on that board up there. That, that J O C does a lot. And that is part of our school district and that's what a lot of the school districts and the county doesn't realize. I mean, that, that's, that's an extension to our. Junior, senior high school and we've done a lot of really good educational programs up there. So we need to maintain that program just like anything else. Okay, as we finish off the agenda, is there any old business or new business that the school board would like to discuss at this time? Before we break and go into an executive session? Okay, hearing none, we will conclude this meeting and Tammy, please make note in the minutes that we went into an executive session to discuss personnel.
Will do, thanks.
Thank you, everybody. And check your email. I have a Zoom link out there for you and.